And I am.
Are you spoken as a true liberal? You turn it on when you want or you turn it off?
Hard carrying, hard carrying, hard carrying and proud of it. Okay, so, um, welcome. Yeah, okay, we have a forum. I bring this meeting to order, that's my pretend gavel, at, what is it, 10:04. All right. So, um, take a look at the agenda, please. And we've changed the order of things, just so it might seem a little upside down, but we're putting the consent items first. And then, um, the President's Report, because that's where we're going to go into the board goal. So we wanted to get as much as we could.
There's some new faces, could you introduce?
Oh, no, not yet. That, if you see it, is here. Chief Executive is going to introduce the new strategic leadership team. But that's after we.
I mean, sitting around the table here.
Okay. That's, go ahead, Grace.
Isn't that what, that's what she meant last time?
Yeah, but it says Mr. Robert French, he's our director, our new director, will be doing our introduction a little later.
Thanks for meeting you.
We have some other new hires as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So take a look at the agenda. Are there any questions, issues? Okay. Need a motion to approve the, oh, is, are there any issues now that you've had a chance to take a look at it? Then, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. And then, please take a look at the meeting minutes.
Please, have we determined it's okay to post these as a draft? Remember that was in the.
Yes, until they're approved.
Okay.
And as soon as they're approved, then the draft will be taken off. Oh, see, I'm looking at hard copy and I should be taking advantage of what Congress is doing for us. Thank you for setting this up, by the way. Are we actually televiding and archiving today's meeting?
Yes, we're recording today.
Okay. So that was our pilot, this is our, our launch.
So we're on TV right now, is that what you're saying?
Or we will be, yeah.
The audio.
The audio.
Oh, the audio, okay.
Audio and the presentations on the screen.
Okay. Any comments or corrections on any of, either of the minutes?
I think it's the ACES one, but not just ACES.
ACES one.
ACES, ACES one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I have a question. So did we really just approve the August 30 minutes in that April meeting? This is great.
August 30th, 2018?
The minute we want to approve until April.
Is that right? Okay, bottom of the first page, or where it says Agenda Minutes, August 30th, 2018. Probably February.
It's going to be in February, right?
I'm sorry, what's your question? Um, so here it says that we approved the August 30 minutes in this April meeting. I don't think that's the right date.
Right, so wasn't there a, was there a meeting in between that time?
It just got to happen, right? Between August last year and this and now?
Yes, there's a meeting in December.
I think that's.
No, it would have been February.
It would have been February. So that would be February, whatever that date was. Whatever that date was, yeah. I do now, yes. Okay. Anything else? Good catch.
Yep.
Okay, with that correction, um, anything else that is popping up? I mean, the minutes are correct, however, on the second page, under President's Report, where it says the first town hall meeting will be June 1st. Our committee met and we decided that we need more time to do more planning with our parents in order for that to happen. So that is put on hold. Um, I want to make clear, under Closed Session, it says Public Employee Performance Evaluation, CEO Oral Report, Compensation Will Remain. That was an Open Session, that was not in Closed Session. Because we're not allowed to talk about salaries in Closed Session. So, Ground Act. So that was an Open Session announcement. So I want to correct that. Anything else? Okay. So, as corrected, um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I believe we approved the minutes as amended.
Do you want other, one other thing?
Oh, yeah.
Did we not discuss monitoring of our students beyond WAS? I thought we, that was last meeting.
Real persistence in college.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably been brought up at every meeting.
Yeah, that and the Chillers.
But I thought we, I thought we specifically had a plan around what to do with that. And maybe we tabled it for today's discussion, but it's just not on here. I don't think.
I frankly don't remember that. I remember bringing it up, but I don't remember having a plan to actually carry it out and who was going to do that. I believe the direction from the Board after one of our presentations was to bring back at the next board meeting, our plan on how we're going to track and monitor data for our graduates at WAS, which is on this agenda, today's agenda, as one of our presentations.
Yeah, and I think it was Peter's request.
A board member request.
High School Graduation Update, number two.
Yes.
Present your points.
So it would actually be at 12 o'clock under Presentation and Report. Number one was graduation data, board member request, the graduation data, and then also the follow-up.
Oh, all right.
On this agenda today. Yep. All right. So, are we okay, or?
Actually, here, it's under this National Clearinghouse Data item.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, good deal. Oh, yeah, regarding graduating students, right? Because, Congress, didn't you do a presentation on that? Yeah, and give us some information? Yeah. Okay. Anything else? That was a meaty meeting last time.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, staff left with 14 things to do. Okay. So I have a motion and a second.
Sure.
Okay. And all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good deal. All right. Public comments. Do we have any public comments? I don't have the slips. Oh, you do, okay. You can just give it to me. Terrific. Thanks, Hilda.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ina, I'm a senior student. I just wanted to address the Board, my concern with none of the information being included in the board package as it relates to all of the information missing regarding the complete consolidated application, applications for ACES, TAS, and WAS, single kinds of student achievement, the local control and accountability plan, um, the academic calendar, the District English Learner Advisory Committee of recommendations, none of that information is missing from the board package today. As you all are aware, the majority of people, students that we have here, families, are of low income. So for that information not to be included in the board package, for us to be able to speak today is very concerning, and for us not to have access to that information, for us to be able to review at today's board meeting. I did ask Mia about that, and of course, it's not included. I know she said that only some sort of summaries were included in here, that you guys will be voting on it and you put it as a consent item. But we should have that information provided to us today for review and to be able to take home. And she said it is on the website, so we should have it. This is an issue that has been brought to this Board before, and Charter School Division has instructed this Board to provide it to the members at the board meetings before, and it has instructed important to so. So I'm not sure what happened, why you guys did not follow through on that request again, but I will be following through, informing them that, I don't, I'm not sure what happened, why this is not happening again. So I will be following up again. So I just wanted to bring that.
Okay. Thank you, Hilda.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments?
One of the others?
Yep. Four minutes, because of, we have translations, and so. There you go. Thank you, Janet, for translating for us. I appreciate that.
Buenas dias. Mi nombre es Maria Sanchez. Maria Sanchez. Soy madre de dos estudiantes de Nathan. I'm the mother of two students at Aces. Mi ocupación ahora es la comida. Hay muchas cosas que a la vez, memory is included, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed. Me gustaría saber qué está pasando con el servicio de la comida. Hay veces, she would like to know what is happening with the service, because there are times, the señor, the service of la comida, the reception, the service. Uh, there is a very odd party, leche majestada. Milk and chicken and bad conditions. And it's a very scary business, they're gonna pull it. She would like to know what is, what is, and I'd like to have a resolution. También quiero saber qué va a pasar con su reformación estudiantil. There's a lot of stress is muy lleno. She would also like to know what is being done about, like, the overpopulation of conscientizes. There's classrooms that have several students. Y el apoyo sobre los niños, y en problemas para el asesor. And then, in support that there is for students that need to be classified. That was the end.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much for the public comments. I appreciate that. Now, we're going to turn it over to our Chief Executive, interim, and Academic Officer. All rolled into one, that would be Grace. Madam President, members of the Board, we shall face announce some new members of our team, some that are sitting here with us and in the audience. The first member we would like to introduce, you know very well that she's going to be serving in a new capacity, and that would be Susan Rodri. Susan has committed 10 years to the organization, and she, basis is Susan at this point, she has one more really good year to left, and she is committed to another year. She's excited of where the vision and where we're headed as an organization. So starting next year, she's going to be promoted as the Director of Elementary Education, so we'd like to announce Susan formally to the Board. Her three focus areas as the Director of Elementary Education is first, providing continuity and transitional support for our new administration of principals here at ACES. As you know, ACES has very little turnover in terms of parents, so we want that to continue permanently now. Second is working with our Latino and our community to expand our parent education program, and continue expanding our parent voice. And then the third would be providing additional support to our elementary program in the area of expanded broad courses of study. Susan, thank you very much for being here, and also for next year of service, we're excited to be working with you.
Thank you, my friend.
Thank you. So with that, we had an opportunity to recruit a principal at ACES, and the young lady that's here with us today, we are so fortunate to have her. She has worked for Camino Nuevo Charter Academy, is really well grounded in the dual language immersion program, and her name is Miss Karin Figueroa, right here. The interview panel that consisted of teachers are classified, including our parents over here, were overwhelmingly enthusiastic about Karin coming. One of her expertises is professional development, which is our goal three in terms of our organizational goal, and she has started book clubs, and also has started parent education programs with her former school, and that was one of the jobs. Not to mention that she's fluent in bilingual, in English and in Spanish, has no barriers in terms of communication with parents, students, and communities. So she was overwhelmingly number one pick. And Karin, thanks for being here with us today when you're not officially started yet. She'll be starting as of July.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Anytime we can snag someone from Camino Nuevo. I'm pretty happy about that. The next, our next introduction is a very special introduction, because she is actually, Dr. Peck, she's one of your former students. This is.
That sounds good already, right?
Dr. Rosie Wong is being promoted from the Assistant Principal at our high school, Wallace Edinburgh High School, to our High School Principal. She has over 25 years' experience in education, and she has a lot of experience with data tracking, assessment and evaluation, and she did her dissertation on how to promote our students towards college and career when you're coming from an underserved background. She's passionate, because she is a first-time collegegirl family in her generation, and she promotes her success to her teachers and also the Upward Bound Program. She's also a Trojan, undergraduate in UCLA, and Trojan for her doctoral degree. What really matters. And you will be very pleased to know, there's been two things that she's been working on. One, she's, we've already hired our College and Career Advisors, new advisors for our high school, to start off for next year, so she's built her team in that area. And when we get to the presentation, she's going to be sharing with you their plan on how to track students towards graduation after WAS. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you so much for allowing me to serve as the Wallace Edinburgh High School Principal. Very excited about that, and just really utilizing the skills and the different things that I've learned from all the experiences that I've been, including active practice class, and.
That was nice.
Excited to implement the things that I learned and just experiences that I've had here. And as a first, like, as we said, as a first-generation college student, I feel like working in this community exactly what it's meant to do, and excited to be here.
Very excited to continue having you with us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd like to just add that one of the great thrills of my job is to see people we've worked with take on these positions with great responsibility. So congratulations, it's very exciting.
She's committed to the next four years at our high school, so she's going to graduate an entire classroom and then plus four. Then our last introduction, we are here with our new face at our table, and this is Mr. Robert French. He will be coming in as our Director of HR. We upgraded this position from a manager position to Director. And Mr. French comes with us, to us, with a long legacy of HR, and perhaps his most valued asset, and he has been an elementary teacher and a site, Assistant Principal and Principal. So he's able to help HR in that direct support to the school sites that we need. He has a legacy of hiring really great teachers. His teachers that he hired have done phenomenal at his school district. And I asked them what the secret to his success was, and he said, Grace, when you go to job fairs, make sure you have the biggest table. In addition to, Mr. French comes to us from San Pedro. He's been a Director of HR and Assistant Superintendent of HR in both Orange County and San Gabriel Valley. And my nickname for him is the Iron Man, because he's run, he's competed in the Iron Man Draft on. Oh, my goodness. Do we?
Sure, I'm just excited for the opportunity. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve this community. I've just been very, very fortunate in my career to work with just amazing teachers, support staff, that have just done amazing things in communities and have a positive impact in communities. When I did research for this, this position, this is exactly where I wanted to land, to serve this community. So I love the, I love the energy, I have a lot of energy, I talk a lot, I do listen to, I love the energy here, I love just the positive stuff from everybody that I've met so far, the positive, move forward approach. And I also have an excellent assistant, Michelle. She's awesome, and she's, she's made this transition for me very smooth so far, so far. So thank you so much.
Very good, and welcome aboard to all of our new hires and our continuing hires with new positions. Really appreciate your willingness to. Aim, no, aim high. Aim high, yeah. Well, hang in there, too. Okay. All right, we now come to the consent items. Is there anyone who feels that one of, or one of these consent items needs to be pulled off and would like to speak to it? Hilda, did you? Okay. What, what item are you speaking to?
That of workers' comp.
Sorry?
The workers' comp carrier.
Number eight.
Item number eight. Number eight, okay.
I would like to address item eight, one of the workers' comp carriers. Unfortunately, because it has impacted me tremendously, and that would be the, I think, option number one, which is our AmTrust with our current carrier. I'm hoping that this Board will definitely not renew our contract with them. They are one of the, I know it's the most comp facious, but it's one of the most horrible workers' comp carrier. Just to give you a glance, I had scheduled my treatment with them, and just at the last minute, right before my appointment had been scheduled, the treatment facility, I had scheduled all my appointments for them, and they, they refused, they, they were not answering the phone from the, the people, the treatment center, and all my appointments were canceled. This has been going on for months. Asha was not able to get in hold of them ever before. It was months and months and months, taking time away from Asha, taking time away from me, taking time away from the treatment center. It is, it actually is taking time away from myself, from the HR here, I'm sure Vincen can attest to it, it's self-time consuming, it's actually costing even more money. So I would ask the Board not to, definitely not to renew the contract with them. They have a very bad reputation, so it might be cost-effective on paper, but it's actually one of the worst companies. So I would just recommend not to go with that provider.
Thank you, Hilda. Thank you.
Are we doing these consents as a group, or we get to each one?
No, it's just if they're, no, consent is the whole.
We're voting overall?
Correct.
Do we know if the Chillers are stainless steel? Yeah, I mean, yeah, they are. Components, components are, the exteriors. Yeah, but the inside, either the components are stainless steel?
Leonard, may we provide just a 10-second summary on each of these twelve, so that we know what we're approving? Okay. First one, number one. I believe you have that in your, in your. You have an executive summary, and so here is the one, one. And it's under, it's under the President's Report.
People feel we need it, you know, we read them in advance, which is great. I did, I don't know if. I did.
Yeah.
Oh, here's, if everyone was done it, I don't think.
Would you feel comfortable? Yeah.
Then probably not necessary, unless you want to. Okay.
Was making sure if it was needed. Okay.
They're on the web, and it's great, like, saves time. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So, here are the consent items. You have, as you've mentioned, taken a look at what these mean, and. I'd like to ask for clarification on one item. For number eight, are we voting for AmTrust with this consent item?
We are voting to go to Berkshire Hathaway, a significant upgrade in service to our workers' comp services. I've had experience with working with Berkshire Hathaway in my previous life, and I am very pleased with their services and their ability to meet our demands.
So we would be voting for Berkshire Hathaway, and we'll be voting to transition out of Amway to this.
AmTrust, correct.
Okay, so that addresses some issues as well. Great. Okay, thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second?
All those, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Consent items passed. And quite frankly, I'll just do a little editorial here. I'm glad we're moving on number eight, on item number eight. Yeah, very good. Okay, so President's Report. Okay. External partnerships. Right now, we have one class at the Accelerated School, who is engaged with UFC, Dornsey, experiential learning, as well as the Los Angeles Football Club, which is partially owned by Tara Guber and Peter Guber, who were founding members of the Accelerated School. And this has been a program that one of the past teachers was engaged with throughout last year, and now they're doing a summer school. And I had the opportunity to be present during one of the classes, and it was really terrific. And I had a meeting with Tara Guber and a number of women from UFC, as well, professors, as well as people who are in charge of STEM, and placing up to 2,000 students from across the university in positions where they assist in classrooms, where they assist with other groups from their particular areas, so business students are interning and doing things like that. But she has a lot of students who are really experienced and eager to help us in our classrooms and at our school. So we're going to be exploring that, which is really amazing. Another one of the women who was there at that luncheon is in charge of the Expo Park. And she's in charge of the whole thing. It was really quite an engaging group of women. We will be meeting again to expand. We will be meeting again to expand the opportunities for the Accelerated School to take advantage of UFC partnerships as well as expand the potential that we have to work with Tara Guber as she and we are exploring opportunities for a parent and community center here as well as other things that are in the works. So we're, we're working on that and our foundation will be, is up and running. And as soon as we have information from Sugarman about our website and a packet that we can give to funders, we will start assertively, I don't want to say aggressively, but assertively pursuing funders and providing them with information about our Accelerated School. Okay, so that's, that's where we are right now. We're going to bring Elizabeth in on that as well because she's been assisting us with STEM. And I'm thinking you have been helping our students with certain things that we can bring, you know, not that you guys are too busy or anything, but so far it's all women, which is, we can do it. Okay, Collaborative Consensus Committee. Wow, wow, wow. This has been such an exciting and thrilling endeavor. Grace and I, but Grace mainly, has been leading our group of administrators from each of the schools as well as the group of teachers from each of the schools to come up with a new vibrant, coherent, collaborative evaluation process for teachers. We're really excited. We think we're going to be ready to pilot something in the fall. And so would you like to add anything? Okay, it's just, it's fabulous. We meet on two either consecutive days or two days that are very close to one another so that teachers don't have to leave their classroom and don't have to spend all day, but we've been able to get quite a bit done. And it's very, very exciting, moving away from the old fashioned, you know, oh, we got to do this, we got to do that, and really having it mean something to the teachers as well as the administrators. And to have it be collaborative is like the best, loving it. Okay, we will keep updating you on that. The Western Association of Schools Accreditation, W.A.T., had their Wallace visit and we were congratulated on our preparation for that visit. I was here and met with the team. They were really quite impressed with what we had put together to identify our areas of strength and need. And at the end of the visit, they had identified five areas that were part of their continuing visit and they had nothing to add. We will not have the full report until maybe a month from now. And at that point, we will share that with you in August, but I want you to know that the team really was quite pleased with our, our showing, if you will, and our. All right, a little break there? Okay, and so that was, that was really fun. And then the Wallace Annenberg graduation at Bovard at USC was great. All of our faculty were able to come and show up in regalia and of course, I always wear my regalia anyway. And next year, we're going to have it at Bovard. We've already put in our request and they said, oh, you're too early. So we're, we're right in line for that and it won't be on Father's Day. So hopefully all the, all the board members will be able to come and wear their regalia as well. Looking forward to it. We had a wonderful speaker who I met during a Dornsey UFC presentation for leadership and her name is Carmen Naloya. And she is incredible and her speech was really heartfelt. She had been a foster student or a foster child. She had been involved in the regional justice system. She did not say for what, but she did. And then she reconnected with her family. She was able to graduate from UFC just this year. And so she's going on to work with students who are underserved and start organizations to support students who are in foster care. So she's continuing to do the work because she is one of those people who is devoted and wants to give back. So that was really exciting. And I just have to say, I had a few little words at the end before the commencement and I was really trying to figure out what to say because, you know, commencement speeches sometimes in one ear and out the other and there's, everyone just wants to get the diploma and go out to dinner, especially on Father's Day. So I had been preparing for that and as I was preparing in the morning, I looked at the Kleenex box and on the Kleenex box, it had words. And the words were bravery, kindness, awesomeness, courageousness, fearlessness. And I just took the box and that was my prop and I just talked about those words. You find inspiration in the oddest places at the oddest times. I didn't even realize that there were words on the, on the box until that morning. So I just want to say, look for inspiration in really interesting places. So now we're going to move on to the discussion of board goals, which everyone has been waiting for. And Tom is going to put on to the screen so that you can see it, all of the different ideas that we received from, and I believe this is in hard copy, right behind the agenda in case you want to take a look at that. Okay, so we had responses from almost everyone and we took a look at these, Grace and I met and we have really thought very hard and long about all of this. But I want you to take, I want our board in particular to take a minute to review these. I know you've seen them, I know you've looked at them, but I want you to take a look at them because what we're going to do is, I'm going to ask you and each of you are going to respond to this particular prompt and that is, what did you notice or what are you noticing about those, that, those suggestions? Were there any ahas? Were there any surprises for you?
Julie, to put it in context.
Yes.
When, how long ago were we given this questionnaire? I don't recall. So it makes me think it's a while ago or I'm slipping.
Yeah, maybe two weeks.
It's just two weeks ago?
Yeah, maybe two weeks. And, and people were pretty responsive.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Because a lot's happened in the last 120 days.
Right, well, no, it's been, it's been.
After that, I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, Peter, hi, we're just getting into the board goals now, so perfect timing. So as you take a look at these, I thought I would go old school and just chart if you had any surprises or any ahas.
Can I help the board for 90 seconds, Peter being here?
Yes.
Just to introduce real quick the new hires?
Oh, yeah, 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 of course, of course. I'm so task oriented, you.
I know.
Okay, Grace? Oh, okay, we'll do it again.
Sorry.
No, no, we're glad to have you here.
I typically waste everybody's time, so I apologize. And build it for it. Yeah.
Susan was going to retire. She's going to give us one more year to help out with the transition and she's really excited about where the organization is going. So she's been promoted to Director of Elementary Education.
Awesome.
We went on a three month search, three month search and so pleased with the quality of candidates and there's one candidate that's moving forward and we can't replace Susan but will help out with the transition the next couple of years. Ms. Karin Segueroa, who's our Principal at ASIS, has been introduced to the faculty and staff, has already started working, but her official start is until July. She comes with us from Camino Nuevo Charter Schools, four years of experience, very well grounded in the language immersion program, fluently English and Spanish. Scott was on the parent interview just before her. Then we have our new principal that's being promoted from assistant principal. This is a very special introduction because she's Dr. Rosie Wong, who used to be one of Larry's students at USC.
We think she'll succeed.
I was going to say. You've already overcome a lot of obstacles.
She's committed to at least four years graduating a hopeful group. And one of her charges, her and I, we've already worked on is we've already hired our college and career advisors at our high school for next year, so she's starting in task. And if we can get to, when we get to it, she's going to share the presentation on how we're going to track our students past graduation based on one of our board member requests at our previous board meeting that we're already working on a plan for. And last but not least is Iron Man because he has.
He has one, the Iron Man.
You shouldn't have put that out there for her.
He's a father of four, comes to us from the South Bay.
Why, we've heard of him. He's very experienced in HR. We've upgraded this position to Director of HR. He's been Assistant Superintendent of HR in both Orange County and San Gabriel Valley, has worked as a Director of HR and has been a Principal and Assistant Principal, so knows how to support our school sites. And that's Mr. Robert French over here.
Nice to meet you. Thanks, Grace, thank you. Thank you. And apologies again that I was late this morning.
Sorry, Madam President, we're back to the board.
That's all right, Madam President, I like that.
Okay, just to refamiliarize you and to let everyone know, the reason that we asked the board members to give us information was because after the last meeting, the staff left with 14 individual items to accomplish. And it, it becomes overwhelming. So one of the things that Grace has asked for us to do is for the board to identify three goals that were important and urgent, both important and urgent, so that we could have direction for the board. And that's what the board is reviewing right now and we'll get, we'll get some of your feedback and then I'll go into the why, the what, and the how. So.
You were going to share with us the prompt?
Oh, the prompt was, I believe I did, just did, to give three board priorities, board goals that are urgent and important. Could you just say it? Okay, the board was given about eight goals that Grace had come up with, but that's a lot. And so what she was asking us to do was to hold this all together so that we could help staff really understand what the board goals were and what we wanted. And if I'm missing something, please let me know. So you've taken a look at this previously and so now what I'd like to do is just get some feedbacks from you about any surprises, any ahas, any, you don't have to weigh in on your perspective, but I want all of the board members to respond in one way or another, okay, just about this particular group of, of suggestions. Elizabeth?
I, you know, I was impressed by the fact that there, I was expecting that there was going to be this great variety of many competing interests, like you were saying, that it could be overwhelming. And, and I found that there was a very common thread. And I thought that was a positive thing. This gives us some solid ground to kind of build around. And, you know, we can discuss what those common threads, that common thread was, but I felt that it was generally going back to the kind of basic thing of what we provide here, okay? That basic kind of core service, education, and it was very much focused on teachers and students. And almost going back to, I felt like it was in your comments, Peter, that even going back to accelerated, why do we even use that term? Go back to the text, you know? We have to go back to this basic kind of core principle and clarify it and then do what is necessary to make that happen. Okay. Very broad.
So I, you know.
You can pass and I'll get back to you later.
No, 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 the comment on the goals, I have to look backward a little bit over the past year.
Okay.
And, you know, the underpinnings of the organization have really changed in many positive ways. So I think the common thread and what it's all about now is we've, we've got people in place, we've got our organization in place. It's really now just everybody doing what they need to be doing and pulling forward. The common thread is because we all know what we want to have happen here. So we've made the big changes to affect a new future and let's just do it.
Better than you, Martha.
Excuse me?
Let's just do it anyway, but we're going to.
I think it's a lot of right.
Thank you, Martha.
Just do it. But again, how then is the tricky thing, but I liked how some other people were saying, I'm not sure who to attribute it to, but let's not get too much in the weeds. Let's just focus on our core service and the nature of it. Our core service, obviously, is education, not product, but what is, the nature of it, is it accelerated, is it, you know, what's kind of defining it and then doing what it's going to take to make it happen? The weeds are things like professional development, make our faculty better or not, I mean, what, how, you know? Yeah, we have to agree on.
Yeah, absolutely. It's interesting, the Accelerated Schools, Hank Levin from Stanford developed the Accelerated Schools model and specifically it was to break the predictable cycle of failure for underserved students. That was the purpose, to accelerate their learning, to treat every child as gifted and to, as, you know, it's accelerate the learning. So staying out of the weeds as a board, but being able to give direction, okay? Larry?
So as you said, common threads, I think I wrote down four as I was listening and thinking at sort of a high level. One was, and I really appreciated Peter's making the point boldly right at the beginning, we want to think about mission and be sure we're, the mission is what we want it to be and then we're on mission. And then the other three that I really thought about was there's a focus on quality personnel at all levels, but teachers was where most of the focus was, but, but we need all of our staff to be the right people, to be able to do a good job and opportunity to succeed and, and continue to grow. Community, communications, it just, all of these in some way, shape or form, talking about the importance of communicating with our, with the community and making sure that we were, we were in touch with them. And then I felt it fairly strongly, I think I read it in the other ones, but maybe I wanted to, is stability. And I see that both in stability of personnel and stability of the finances. And those sort of were the three big areas and lots and lots of things fit under each of those or across those, but those aren't small challenges to address on a regular basis. And the mission guide is a lot. I really appreciate you saying that, I wish I had.
Peter?
Yeah, I mean, look, I think, I think the mission question to me is sort of fundamental, right? The, when, in my view, the best organizations when they engage in strategic planning are always driven by what the mission is, right? So when you have difficult decisions to make, when you need to prioritize, when you need to choose between two competing ideas, you can always go back to the mission question, right? And the best mission statements and ideas that I've seen are most effective, answer, and I said this, answer the why question. Why are we sitting here doing what we're doing, right? So, you know, small examples, right? Let's, you know, there are, there are public interest organizations that are all about homelessness, right? And their mission is everybody deserves a roof over their head. It's simple, it's driven by a simple message, everybody deserves a roof over their head. You know, my friend Jamie Semenoff, who started Ring, you know, the doorbell? Yeah, yeah, he's got a simple mission, right? Reduce neighborhood crime. That's it. Everything he does with his products is all about reducing neighborhood crime. He's answering the why question. Why does he do what he does? He wants to reduce crime in your neighborhood. Why are we sitting here? I think we got to come back fundamentally to that question and let it drive decision making. So if we accomplish anything, I think that's critical, especially when we're focused on the educational mission of the school. And then the other two were very consistent with what you heard. One is sort of focusing on the quality of our product, right? I think about it from the very business, corporate business perspective. What are we selling? We're selling the best educational product we can possibly put together for our students. And so what does that mean, right? That means best teachers, best administrators, access to resources to do so, communicating in full transparency, you know, everything sort of put in there. And then third and finally, which is what Larry touched on, you know, I called it sustainable. And then third and finally, which is what Larry touched on, you know, I called it sustainability, right? Financing, budgeting, physical plan. How do we ensure that we're going to be here 100 years from now? And so, those are the three things that I would focus on.
Okay. Cindy? So, I think what was interesting to me, it was something that we've been focusing on within my organization at work, is, you know, life readiness of our employees. And so, I can understand what it's like here, life readiness of our graduates. And one thing, I think, you know, it's all very good and well-focused in academic excellence and test scores, and making sure our students are getting in, getting off to some good colleges. But I think, you know, two words that really support me are perseverance and resilience. And granted, a lot of our students are already resilient, right? They're coming to the school with, you know, having already, you know, accomplished a lot. But I think giving them the tools to tackle college, that's a whole different thing, not from an academic standpoint, but from a characteristic standpoint. How do we do that? And what programs can we add? Maybe the after-school program to help them, maybe that's resume building, you know, whatever it is, the whole package on getting them ready for life beyond. Kind of what I was looking for. Some of the themes came up there, but that's kind of where I was at it.
Yeah, it'll be very interesting to hear from Rosie about your plan to get information about our students. We do a really good job of making our students eligible for college. And now, it's time to find out how ready they really are, and what we can do to make them more ready. Not just for college, but for career, for life, as you mentioned.
I may be jumping into Rosie's report later, I don't want to do that, but I think it's not only readiness, but to succeed in college or succeed at work. But one of my colleagues who runs a college advising program at the school and enrollment management, he says, not only do you get them accepted, they have to actually enroll in August, which is a problem, and they have to re-enroll in year two. And his theory is, if they re-enroll in year two, we've got them, and they'll finish college. And that's our goal, is not to get them to college, but to get them to finish college. And that's, so I hope I'll assume thunder from you, Rosie, but I think that that's, when we think about what are we preparing them for, is to get on the way through college. We've been studying the charter school that USC runs, and what happens to the students if they go online. We have some really interesting information that really talks about the challenges you face. I don't know how well we can or we do prepare for some of those experiences, but it's a big part of it, too.
Okay. Right, thank you all. Any other final?
I was just going to add to that. Just going to add to that, you know, that we keep sort of resting on this, we're doing a really good job of preparing our students for college, and that's awesome. Okay, great. But I don't want to get too comfortable with that either. You know, I want to make sure that we continue. It's a very challenging, I sort of work at that nexus of, you know, coming into college and then staying and getting into college and that sort of thing. And I don't think we can take that for granted, is what I'm trying to say. I don't, I don't think we can say, oh, that's done, now we can move on to all these other things. I want to just make sure that we're doing everything we can to continue to make sure that academically, you know, that core eligibility is still there. There are many things that can shift in admissions, you know, what we're looking for now, now we're looking for. And I want to be mindful of that.
I'm in agreement with you, and I'm just being out of the facilitator role now, and I'm going to be a board member, and say, yeah, I'm very concerned that we need to... No. Let me put it another way. We need to broaden our academic program. We are having a cluster of students from time to time who leave us in eighth grade because we don't have honors classes in ninth grade, or we don't have enough advanced placement courses. So, you're absolutely right. For the students who do remain with them, we do a good job of making them eligible, making sure they're eligible. And a number of them do go on and do quite well. And we can't stop there.
I'm not even sure if we are or aren't doing a good job. I don't know what the metrics are that we're using to say that. Really hasn't been...
That they're eligible? Well... Yeah, I mean...
I'd like to hear it. We really haven't, I don't think we've heard it.
Oh, okay. Unfortunately, we haven't published the list of our graduate students and where they're headed off to.
And it's been confusing, where they're going, are they eligible? I just, you know...
I agree. I think we're saying that they're ready and that we do a good job. I'm not sure that's true.
Me either. Maybe we are, but I'm not convinced yet.
Can I, no, can I just make two quick comments?
Sure.
So, number one, right, what you just said really goes to the mission, right?
Yeah.
We're the accelerated school, but we don't have honors and AP classes? Like, that doesn't make any sense to me.
We have some AP classes and some other...
But like, that's a question, right? I mean, if we're called the accelerated school, that's the mission, we have to be driven by that. And so, are we? I'm not sure, right? So, I think we should be, but I'm not sure we are, right? Second, I agree entirely, like, I hate getting hung up on, oh, well, everybody got into a two- or four-year college, and I don't care. I don't. I want to know, like, do these kids have stick-to-it-iveness and perseverance and study skills and independent thinking and be able to problem solve, be able to, and have passion and lifelong love of learning? I mean, that's what's going to make them successes.
Do I get consensus on this?
Sort of like, I don't want to ask the wrong question. Like, I've, we've said for years, we're doing great, we're this ranking in the state, and all these kids go to college. I just think that that's crap. I don't care. I want to know if they're successful.
Right.
Using metrics that matter.
And you have to think of it like business people, too. I mean, to go back to your prime core business, you know, mission, to make the neighborhood reduce neighborhood crime, you know?
No, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I jumped into my chat. Go ahead.
So, Leonard, so you have to think of it as, okay, well, then we can do better. So, we're doing great. Well, let's do better. Let's do better, because we've got competitive.
And do we have an underserved population within the school of students that can excel? We've been spending a lot of time and resources on moving the bottom tier of students up. And it's easier to do that. I believe...
It's not easier to do that.
Well, I believe that we're, I believe that we're having, that we're missing some of the top-tier students that have academic potential by not serving them as well.
Well, even more basic, I mean, Hank Levin's model, accelerated school model, is a very clearly laid-out model.
Yep.
It was 20 years ago. And the question might be just to what extent do our current curriculum and programs match what he had? And he hasn't written much about it in the last 10 years.
No, no.
He's been off to other things. But what, how does our model, how does our curriculum align with what the accelerated model was? And I think also, how does the accelerated model jive with what we expect today?
It's the right model.
The model leaves some tweaks.
Okay, and we're going to take a look at all of that and then on a retreat.
Yeah.
Okay? Because we can't do it in a board.
Can we invite Hank?
Sure, we can.
And it's very difficult to teach things like resilience, because we struggle with this in college. Because this isn't like, oh, we just need a resource center, and we can teach, you know, grit. It's like, no. I mean, and we also can't assume that because people are underserved, that they, they've got grit, or that they don't have grit, or that other people do have grit.
It's also hard to measure.
It's very difficult to know. We don't even know what we're talking about. People talk about it all the time, and they don't even know how to define it.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, someone bottle this energy for it. Retreat!
Okay.
How many times have I... Where am I? Okay, all right, all right. You're going to help me organize that, okay? Yeah. All right, we, I want to move along because Grace and I did the same kind of thing that you're doing, and we came up with a synthesis of this. But before we do that, I want to go into the what, the why, and all of that. So, on the overhead over here, the why. Why we're doing this now, we need focus goals. As I mentioned last board meeting, staff left with a number of individual things to do that weren't really driven by a mission or a clear board goal. Or so, 14, right, there were 14 separate items, right? And so, we're, as a board, we continue to count on our staff, and our staff is really good at coming back and providing us with what we've asked for. However, they're sort of like trying to go all over the place, and we really need something coherent for them. Staff will be much more efficient and effective when they know exactly where we are so that they can fulfill these wishes. Once we have a few of the board goals, a few strategic board goals, as all of our stakeholders will also know where we're going to and what our purpose is. And so, I think clarifying the mission again, and recommitting to whatever it is that we are about is really important, because then our staff can engage with all of our stakeholders, both internally and within the school, as well as our community, our parents and community. We have three separate LCAPs. Now, they do overlap, and you've seen in the presentations that those overlaps are really helpful to identify, because it brings coherence. But there are still separate issues that each of the schools deal with. And if we can come together and have organizational goals from the board, that as a school as a whole... Now, school as a whole was one of the ideas that Hank Levin talked about early on. And when I was at Cal State LA, the Charter College of Education was a school as a whole, and we meant that way, which is, means all different departments, and in this case, all of our different schools come together to deal with issues that are overarching and across all of those schools, which is what the board goals really are all about. And then, the what? Governance. We're the board, and governance is where we're at. And policies, policies and direction. That's what our job is. The management has the how. They're the ones that come up with the strategies, and we can approve those or not, but they're the ones that are on the ground doing all of these things that will reach the board goals, that will make the accelerated schools like that little guy on our, you know, aim high, where he's really reaching for the sky. So, that's why we're doing this right now. And what Grace and I did was, we took a look across all of these, and we came up with three synthesized goals, and we will share them with you now. Okay? The first is redesign space, and you'll notice these all have verbs that start with, redesign space utilization. Right now, we have teachers that don't have their own classrooms. We have administrators that don't have their own offices. And one of the things that our funders and our partners are interested in is, because they're ready to bring all kinds of programs to us, they just need space. And we don't even have space for the students that we have in the classrooms. So, ACES is at their cap. The accelerated schools is over its cap. The high school still has some room to grow. And so, one of the things that we need to do is really take a look at space utilization. If we're going to have a parent and community center, if we're going to have a college and career readiness center, then space utilization is huge. And it feels as though nothing can really happen until we grab a hold of that issue.
In looking at the financials, my recollection is that the student count is below what was budgeted and below our...
High school.
Seventeen hundred and... What are we at, seventeen fifty?
So, budgeted ADA is seventeen fifty, and we have been trending under that for the past year.
Where did we get the number eighteen fifty at one point? Or eighteen...
I think we've said approximately eighteen hundred students.
Yeah. But we're budgeting for seventeen fifty, and we're at, what's the ADA with the enrollment?
My ADA right now, ninety-three percent over the past year on average.
That's the ADA with the seventeen fifty, with the enrollment.
Rosie, do you know how many students you have at the high school?
One eighty-seven.
How many is our cap? What's our cap? Six eighty-eight. Two hundred students for that.
And we ended enrollment at seventeen sixty-seven this year. So, and our authorized enrollment total is seventeen ninety-five?
Look, for each school.
I understand. I just wanted to just get back to the line of what you're saying. Okay.
Leonard, one of the things that has been a practice in our district is that we budgeted for more than we were supposed to. So, now, LAUSD keeps coming back and saying, but this is not what you can, you're authorized to budget for, because it's always exceeded the charter...
They're right.
Yeah. So, when you're going to see Vincent's numbers, Vincent's going to be a little bit more faithful to what we're supposed to, because we're getting...
Well, we can't budget for more than we either physically house or be or are authorized to have. Pretty fundamental.
Right, but if we had all of those high school students that filled up our enrollment, where would we put them?
Right. Okay.
Okay. So, that's the first one. The second one, accelerate and improve student outcomes. And I think that's pretty much what we've gathered here. To accelerate and improve student outcomes means hiring, orienting, training, and retaining quality personnel, upping our programs, broadening the curriculum so that our students are challenged, bringing back the arts. Again, we don't have space for that. So, we see these two as being really critical. And then finally, building a communication system to engage and inform all stakeholders. One of the things that we've been working on, when we've been working with our parents, is what are the best ways of communicating? How do teachers communicate with parents now? Can we, you know, expand that? Grace is working with Sugarman, which is an organization to assist us with our outreach to the community and painting a picture of who, of what task is, and the communication from teacher to teacher across schools. And so, this is a communication system is where we're headed at this point, since not everybody knows what's going on. So, those were our three.
Are those in priority order, or is it just three that you...
Just three.
Okay.
Just three. And I see finance implicated in all of that.
I would, if they were prioritized, I'd switch the order. I don't care if they're...
I would love to see a word answered, edited somewhere here. We talked about accelerating improvement in student outcomes, but I think we really need to have in there sort of monitoring that, or, you know, that we totally just don't say we're doing better. I know that we all know that, but I think it needs to be stated.
So, what would you, what would, how would you reframe that?
Accelerate, improve, and...
And monitor?
Measure or monitor.
Measure, okay.
Yeah, student act.
Okay, and then...
That's very broad stroke.
Okay, well, it is, because that's the board goal. However, then, one of the roles of staff will be to develop strategies and ways to accomplish that, to monitor that.
Be standing one word.
As well as indicators of success.
Right. Any of that, but as long as it's added to this.
Okay, it's added.
Okay.
And Grace is getting this down, I think Mia is, too. Okay. Anything else? So, I wanted this to be by consensus, but I just assumed I have a bug on it. If these can be the 2019, 2020 board goals for this year, I would like a motion to improve these.
About whether we need to vote on it? Or what do I think of the goals?
The goals.
What do I think? Well, I like the goals. I think number two is pretty broad, I forgot how you measure it.
Yeah. But that's up to staff.
I know. I mean, I think space utilization, and I think communication are two issues that we know for a while that we should deal with. I like those. And then... And the middle one is the critical one, right? I mean, I think that's... Look, we as a board have done a really good job over the last ten years of like making sure we have physical footprint and new beautiful buildings and we have plenty of, you know, we have money and our budgeting has been good and we've really tightened the belt and now it's time to focus on our core problem, right? And so we have a great platform to build on. So I think number two is the most critical one. But I mean...
We can, they don't have to be numbered, but we can certainly...
That's a pretty, that's a pretty, like, that's a very, very big category.
That's our mission and that thrives.
That should be number one.
I would say focused on students should appear at the top of the list.
Okay.
I guess, I, the one that currently sits at the top spot about space utilization, I understand the importance and it's been driving a lot of things that go on for a long time. And I'm, we're often part of, we're often a victim of what we've done in the past. And there's a question in research, does facilities matter in terms of student outcomes? And I'm the leader of the research group that says they don't. That means every child should still have a safe, clean, good place to go to school every day. A teacher should have places they want to go to work every day, but it isn't going to improve student learning. So I would add to this list or replace that one with something about personnel, which the word is missing here and the people who make the school work every day seem critical to me.
Well, you can't accelerate and improve student outcomes with quality personnel.
I'm willing to put them in there and that's fine. And I'm willing to say it's assumed in that and I'm fine. I would have even assumed measurement that I say that.
Because that's the how that staff does.
I just want us to be clear that we all recognize that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm happy to leave the facilities issue as part of the discussion because eventually we have to keep everybody there. But it's, it's, it doesn't excite me as much as...
I don't need to see it as critically. I think there's some things that could be, I see your face, but I think there are some things that are...
You know, my nonverbal speak volumes.
No, listen. Look, we have extraordinary facilities apart.
I agree.
Okay?
Beautiful.
So can we, can we utilize them a little better? Can we lose things? All that, but I don't, I think that we can...
Can we? We must.
I will tell you this, we could spend five million dollars straightening out the facilities next year and it won't change the outcome.
That's right.
Okay?
I agree with you on that.
So...
Well, wait, well, I think that's a little too...
Flushing.
That's a little too flip, right? Because if I would tell, if I would say to you, if we used the house that we bought and built more classroom space and could use somewhere else to have like a music and arts theater, you don't think that would change the program? That, to offer music and arts that we don't offer now? Or what if, what if we could put a soccer field out here and suddenly we had a varsity soccer field? So you can't just say, I'm sorry, you cannot just say flippantly, space doesn't matter, period. Do I think it is a priority over the other two? Though, I don't personally, but it doesn't not matter.
I will tell you this, we added on ten to millions of dollars worth of facilities and have poorer outcomes than we did twenty years ago when we had a small...
You misunderstand, you misunderstand my point though.
I get, I get.
I'm not sure. Like, look, if, look, if what you're saying is building bright shiny new buildings, doesn't mean students are going to be better and, and taught better and learn well, yes, I a hundred percent agree. It has, it goes back to personnel. That's number two, right?
We have four, we have, we have a hundred students off campus in another building.
And I don't know that we should have that. I, I am singularly focused now on, if it were up to me, at some point, I wouldn't have, wouldn't have even maybe grown as much as we did. I wanna, I don't care if it's five hundred students, twelve hundred, seven, I want them to really be doing well. And I'm, I'm not...
I do too, when they don't have a good classroom.
I worry we're going to add five more classrooms and we'll have five more classrooms worth of kids at an average. So I think, so I don't mind doing that and looking at that, but I don't want us to think that that's going to move the needle tremendously.
I think that we should include how we use our facility as part of a program to improve learning.
Absolutely.
And, and I think that all, you know, the statement you made is, is we can spend five million dollars next year, scores won't go up. But if we spend five million right over the next ten years, that may be one piece of what helps us recruit.
Exactly.
Faculty and administrators and groups of students who are...
That's what I'm saying.
That will get us there.
Correct.
So that's, and it's something we want to do, but there's, there's sort of two pieces to it. There's the immediate need of, we're overcrowded.
Right.
And are there ways to, well, what I'm not clear on is capacity for Wallace Annenberg is six eighty-six and there are four hundred and ninety students there. Those are the rough numbers I heard, Rosie. Okay, I'm close. Does that mean that there is classroom capacity in that building that could be used for middle school children or not? Okay? I would put elementary school children there, but, but I just don't know what, what, what those... But it seems to me one step is to really find people who are expert in how you utilize space to see if we can utilize what we do better. And then we could develop a longer-term capital program to meet those needs.
Right.
That's a long-term sort of thing that has to one, fit into what do our goals look like about learning? And how are we going to, what kind of, for example, if we set our goal is reduce class size by five students per classroom, that's an immense implication for the facility that we're sitting in. If we say we're comfortable with class sizes and we want more people to provide other services for children around those classes, it has not quite as immense a need, but a very different demand on how we allocate space and building spaces. So I think we have to be absolutely clear on what it is we're going to do. And then we really need to figure out how to use space. And in the meantime, we need to see if there are, and I don't, I just don't know the answer to this and I don't want to make the assumption that we're doing it best or not, that are we using the space we have in the most efficient possible way or are there some things we can squeeze out of it as we look at it?
And it's number one, that really is subset of number two. There are so many pieces missing from number two that are implied. I'm not sure why number one is being called out as one of the victory initiatives.
Well, I agree. I think, I think number, I think the middle one there is where our laser focus has to be.
Absolutely.
And, and then everything else grows from that.
And, but you know, the other thing I've seen over the years watching this is that doing facility stuff is a very fielded thing. The board leaves, we feel we've raised money, we've put up in a building or we've done whatever it is.
So it's what happens in...
But it hasn't, it really, if anything, it's made our outcomes a little bit worse. I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but I, I think it's almost a subset of number two. I, I just, very cautious.
I'm good with that.
I'm very cautious about...
So we have two goals. That's great.
Just because we have a center doesn't mean that what we're, it, it, it doesn't mean that what we're trying to do there is happening.
But we go home and we feel good because we have a center.
It kind of goes back to the IPAD thing. Oh yeah, we've got a bunch of IPADs. But what's happening with the IPADs?
Exactly right.
Nothing. So that's the thing. I saw our friend Susan Rodri perform miracles at a church annex center. Church annex for many years.
We're still performing miracles.
Performing miracles.
At the church center.
I knew you are, but the other one, the other one that we're no longer at, the little building, you know? And she was doing that for, for many years. So it depends on what's happening. We're tripled up. I'm a full professor at the church. I've been there for over, over twenty years and I, I'm tripled up on my office. Tripled, like I was when I was TA. I've never been more productive. Just out of necessity, but you know what I mean? If, I think that, I think we, I, I, anyway, I'm saying the same thing. We need to subordinate.
Okay.
Needs to subordinate.
And that's to be diminished, that that's...
Oh, it can't be diminished because we won't, we won't bring the arts back.
Well, we have to do whatever's urgent.
That's right.
Whatever's urgent. But...
And for me personally, and this is, I'm not facilitating, no, I'm being a board member. For me, it's urgent to get those teachers out of the library and out of the multipurpose room and into classrooms. And it is essential to get administrators into offices where they can have conversations with people and do their work. That to me is...
But you, proper utilization of space, I don't know if any of us have expertise on that. There are all kinds of new things being done with...
Oh, the how, believe me, is going to be, we hire, we hire someone who is an expert in space utilization, working a little bit with Tom, and we develop a utilization plan. I mean, we can't just say, oh, put another, you know...
Well, but, but you actually can't. I mean, I don't know the layout of the facility well enough to know what kind of space exists.
We now have a piece of property.
But you can put temporary buildings in places and, and immediately achieve some of the goals you wanted to achieve.
That's correct.
And, and that's not as desirable as having a gorgeous building like this in the long term.
Right.
But if the goal is to make the library a library and not additional classrooms, to make the multipurpose room, multipurpose room and not additional classrooms, and to create office space for people who need quiet or preferred places to work, there are ways to do that very quickly.
Right.
And, and this thing kind of has a surplus of temporary buildings in it because...
My fault.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I mean, we've got people, we, we know what we're talking about. I mean, you know how to do those sorts of things. So I think that that's, space becomes crucial in terms of how many classrooms do we need? And where do they have to be? And how close can we get to where they have to be tomorrow? And then in the long term, if this really is working, how do we create a facility that, that gives us that in the right way? But, but it also, by not building a school and then saying, oops, it gives us the ability to really think of, was our idea for how to use space right? And, and you have probably far better ideas than I have. I'm quite confident of that. But we don't know if they're going to, if our definition of work is going to matter and we don't really know what's going to happen five years out in terms of expectations more broadly. And so, we also have these concerns around whether this recession comes, what's it going to do to our funding? And if we build capital with private funds that are raised elsewhere, that may matter less. We just, I, to me, there's ways to, to create facilities that enable us to get the pieces we need right away. Like the library seems pretty crucial, have a library that's a real library, right?
Well...
Maybe, well, even if it's a media center as opposed to a library.
Yeah. There you go. We have ideas about that.
But what the, how you utilize that space, what we now call a library, is part of number two.
That's right.
All right? But we want to be able to utilize it as we think is best, not as classrooms for children to be crowded.
And how, will anything we do support number two?
Yes. That's right.
Push that ball forward? And are we spending money in the right place? Are there other competing ideas in number two that we'd better utilize them out of?
If we have competing demands, then yeah.
We do have competing demands. We need great teachers.
But I don't see how having great teachers and having the facilities to house them...
Because a lot of that's due with money, are we...
Well, that's why I said, I believe finance is implicated in all of it.
Right. Finance underpins everything. It doesn't have to be quite as explicit.
I think we're on the same page. It sounds like, it sounds like we're subordinating the facility piece, but not taking it off. We're going to do the facilities piece, but it's going to be driven by number two as opposed to be kind of standalone. So it's the same thing, it's just you go from two to one. I mean, sorry, three to two.
Right.
And it's, whatever we do with space is just, I think the board direction is, it's got to be driven by improving student outcomes, which you were going to do anyway, so it's fine. We're all the same.
Okay.
We probably don't need to vote on this.
Okay, so by consensus?
Yeah.
We're down to two with number one being subordinate to number two.
Correct. That's it. We're good.
Okay.
Fabulous.
Let's give ourselves a hand.
Yeah, nice.
Okay, Grace, you deserve a break. Let's take a ten-minute break.
Okay, ten-minute break. And there's coffee and juice and...
Having a board meeting with a break. I love it.
I'm sure we, that's by definition...
Just slightly ahead of time.
We're sending the material out ahead of time. Everybody's reading, but we didn't have the big...
It helps.
I mean, I still... So I won my big case. So I don't have to... No, 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 no.
The materials that were projected, the archives, and how can people get a hold of those?
On the website. We'll be posting these on the website, all of the presentations. If you would have minded, Mrs. Doc, one last final word on our discussion.
You got it down right there.
Thank you very much for the consolidated...
Or an upgrade, I don't know.
... discussion from our board members and our priorities moving over. So the next thing back from this position would be to take a look at the two that we agreed on, accelerating improving measures and student outcomes. And I will be bringing forth indicators of success and metrics for the board to take a look at to see, is this the right direction that we want to head in terms of gauging our success? So that will be at the August quarter meeting.
Thank you very much. Because one of the things that we know about education is if it gets assessed, it gets done. And so having the metrics ahead of time, having the metrics ahead of time really helps.
That's not just unique to education, by the way.
I was just going to say. Shocking how, shocking how legal associates feel the need to get things done when there's going to be accountability.
Yeah. Well, okay, back, back in the day, when Grant Wiggins was, was big on testing, it was witty wig. What you test is what you get. Okay. So, thank you, Grace. Now, we're going to move to the presentation and the college dashboard was taken off because I'm now looking at a new agenda. And we're going to start with...
Dr. Our new principal of WIS. So one of our...
Oh, goody. Oh, goody.
One of our bring backs at our last board meeting was, how are our graduates doing in graduating class? And what is our plan to track them in the future on their future success and what additional supports that we would need? So Dr. Wong is here with our college and career advisor, Ms. Gloria Daliya. She is currently working part-time and we've also hired two additional college and career advisors to support the work.
Before we begin, I just would like to thank Gloria and congratulate her for pulling off a really great graduation at Bobart. You did yeoman's work. The kids were great. Everything went smoothly. It was a fantastic graduation and I really appreciate your effort and the time that you put into it. And I know the kids and their parents did too. Thank you.
Thank you. So would you speak, as a president, board member? I just want to thank all the people that helped put this presentation together. And then thank Ms. Gloria and Daliya and then actually, I think, the media as well. So I'm excited to share this information because the things that you talked about today is exactly what we're aiming for as well. So when we're talking about graduation pathways, this is the state requirement for high school students. And we're looking at this, we're looking at students who are prepared. And so what we want to do is, we want all of our students to be prepared. And thanks to the work that we're, that Tang did yesterday, the thing did yesterday about the leadership charge, we looked at all the different components about talking about where we want to go with our students. So just so that you know, we discussed at WIS how this is prepared is basically the minimum requirement that we want our students to have. So just like the conversations we had, you had earlier, we want our students to not only be prepared, but also be ready as well as be, really, to be successful in life, not just in college, but really successful in life. So when we're looking at this requirement, like I said, this is the college, college career readiness indicator. And we're working, the goal, the way that we're going to be focusing on this is, our goal is to increase how our students are going to be presented as a prepared section. We want to make sure that we're introducing advanced placement classes. So we actually are including or increasing our number of AP classes. We actually have about two onboard. And the other item is college credit courses. So we're actually increasing the number of dual enrollment classes as well. So thanks to Ms. Daliya's work with LAETC, LA Trick Tech. And then we're also looking at the state field of identity, increasing our students who are recognized as being bilingual. So we're making sure that our kids are taking Spanish and are able to have access to higher-end AP Spanish classes, AP literacy as well as AP literature. And then also we're looking at UC, Cal State, making sure that all our students are APG required. We're making sure, like for example, our ELD three and four classes are actually identified as APG classes. Right now, they're not. So we're going to work on increasing those numbers. So when we're looking at this metric in terms of what college identifies as being prepared for college, we're looking at each one of those and trying to increase our students, to make sure that our students, that we're providing support to make sure that our students are able to meet these requirements as well. So that's for us as a high school, basic target in terms of each, increasing the numbers for our students to be college ready. So I say this because that's going to lead into a lot of information I'll be sharing as well in the next couple of PowerPoints. But when we're looking at this as our high school, this is what we're looking at as a basic, basic measure in terms of increasing our student performance and making sure they're college and career ready. So again, just a basic measure. And then I love the fact that you're empowering us to increase our ability to stand this as well, like even something at CTE, especially not wanting to go to college, spoke to students, like, I don't want to, I don't think I want to go to college. And I was like, how about culinary? Because that's what he did. He goes home and cooks for his family. So even thinking, you know, ahead about CTE program for our students as well is part of one of the measures for exceptional students. So this is basically different pathways that we have. This is a WIS pathway. So when we come in, our students, we want to make sure all of our students are not only APG ready because those are basic requirements now, that state identifies as not prepared. They're just basic requirements. But now, because it's a lot more rigorous, it's prepared, the WIS is basically preparing our students to be UC as well as DSU and private schools ready instead of just your basic college and university. So this is our goal when students come in. This is where our expectation is that they have WIS requirements. So we're going to definitely make sure... So we're going to definitely make sure with the new additional staff that we're tracking the students from the get-go, from ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade and providing any intervention at the very beginning in terms of ninth grade when we're doing this. And a lot of it is attributed to, uh, to staffing, making sure that we provide that. I know that Ms. Zalaya does a great job of giving, um, our 12th grade students here. She schedules every single parent, she meets every single parent and their, their graduate students. They discuss all the different requirements for this. But we want to make sure that we start off early, we want to make sure that we start off in ninth grade, um, having the students and the counselors meet with the parents twice a year. So that's our goal in terms of making sure that all our kids are prepared and ready to go from the very beginning.
Quick question, what is, what do the yellow highlights represent?
So these yellow highlights are, um, recently the same requirement that we have with all these.
Do we have a community service requirement now or is that the, is this something we're adding?
Yes, we do have a community service requirement, 100 hours.
That's good.
Wait, so what is the yellow, sorry, I didn't understand that. You said it's, it's the criteria that are consistent across all three?
Yes, so English, math, um, science.
Content area is not numbers of years. The numbers of years are just.
So what about the community service aspect?
So why is community service highlighted if it's just for WAS?
Just trying to see where we differentiate ourselves from the California minimum.
So the, the highlighted areas are actually the differences that you see across all three pathways. So, um, when you see three years of English as a California minimum, you see over on.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think that four years.
That makes sense, okay. So it's, so the yellow ones are above and beyond California minimums, okay. Yeah.
So it's basically the, the requirements, but the, the, um, way that the WAS has is much higher in terms of standing.
Except that to me, not planned, so yeah.
Sure, got it.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
Um, this is for this year, class of 2019, um, number of students who are graduating different pathways. Um, first one was the WAS pathway, 68% graduated with the four years of English, four years of math. Um, so that's the WAS pathway. 88%, which includes 68% graduated with APT, uh, which is the minimum requirement. And then also with a California minimum, there's 100%.
How many students is 7%?
Um.
Seven times 500.
What's that?
Did we have 500?
Graduate?
35 students.
What's the 500?
Graduate?
Yeah, oh, you're right. So about seven students, okay.
104 grad. Um, and so, this is a student class, 72% were admitted to two-year institutions, um, and 54% enrolled, um, and 35% enrolled in two-year institutions and, um, 4% in the military and 2% straight school. So these are the numbers in terms of students, um, demographics of graduating classes.
I, I appreciate percentages and I really like numbers, like how many students. Not instead, I like both.
But, but it's roughly out of 100, right? So the percentage is pretty easy to use anytime, right? But I, I.
Out of 100, oh, 103, 104, 104. So these are the colleges that students were admitted to. Um, I'm just going to let you get a hint and see the different types. There are some UCs as well as, uh, Cal States as well as, uh, private schools, good very, um, and then different college types that we have. And just to let you know, our valedictorian's got to get up. Dr. Pike is, Dr. Pike is.
I love, I love.
Our valedictorian, our valedictorian got to stop the UCLA.
Valedictorian, did you, did your valedictorian, did she apply to USC? What I worry about, no, no, what I worry about is, is things like sticker shop, okay? You look at USC tuition and you go, I can't afford it, so I'm not going to apply. And the truth is, you can and we have a lot of financial aid. I assume that as we build the college council board, we'll make that clear that you should never look at the price and be scared. Because sometimes it's cheaper to go to USC than UCLA. I mean, you should go where it's right.
I would say that's more personal experience, however, um.
Undergraduates do better than graduates do.
So what I think we definitely want to do is increase the partnership with USC. Which definitely, uh, in terms of the different works and in terms of our proximity and because of our relationship there, um, I think definitely, um, USC would be great, um, having, and that's our goal, to increase our partnership with the different colleges. And just so that, you know, one of the things that we are doing in terms of, we, uh, were provided with a semicalar scholarship for about $30,000. And part of that was because we had already worked on their, um, on their, um, curriculum in terms of all information about college, access to college, um, specifically for, like, even students. And, uh, we do roll it out this year for all of our students, um, specifically in ninth and, uh, 11th and 12th grade students. And, um, we're looking to increase in that program and we have four students that are going to be, um, going to have all those different lessons. Um, like, um, like what was mentioned earlier, I think I achieved some of my discussions. I'm really having to support different people in my life. And also when I was in high school, I was part of the upper bound program. And I think that helped me in terms of making sure that I knew what it was like to, um, to be in college at a high school level. And then I actually took, uh, dual enrollment courses, but at the same time, you just see what the light is by getting, seeing the ask questions, who to ask questions. So I think those are basic things about colleges.
And my guess is SC has a much higher persistence rate than the UCs.
To my knowledge, that is the case. We work hard in Rattus nowadays. It is right.
That'd be interesting, yes, because we want to guide our graduates to have the best.